Pass it back around if you'd like.
Who's still you, right?
No, Rebecca.
Oh, you're the reviewer now?
Oh, okay.
This is a fresh one.
Okay, is this the first one?
This is Rebecca's first one, yeah. Or it's not, it's not for, this is for next meeting. This is just, we just printed today. We're not going to be discussing this one tonight.
Who did the last one?
I would assume you then.
No, because it was in October.
Wrong time of the year for me.
Actually, no, I think I did because you were missing. You missed that meeting, so I reported up.
Yeah, you did, that's right.
Yeah.
Yes, but who reviewed? Was that the last one that was reviewed?
That was the last one that was reviewed.
So that's, was that dated today?
Uh, no, that was two weeks ago. This, this, this is the one that's from today. It's going to be issued next.
So there was one on the sixth.
Yes, and that's the one that I reported out on.
But I didn't review that one.
Yeah, you did.
Because that was in October.
It wasn't.
Okay.
We're gonna find out when we get to that point.
Yeah. Anyway, this is the one that we're gonna issue on Thursday.
6:30 in Reed Field, please join me in quiet.
The United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining our October 20th meeting. We got a couple of things we want to go through and we're gonna, if it pleases the board, gonna switch things up. We're gonna do our meeting minutes warrants and then we're gonna have our guest from Kennebec Savings Bank and then check in with our graveyard automobile permits, if that's okay with everybody. Great, so first item is 26025, the minutes from our October 6th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? All those in favor abstaining?
Due to absence.
Thank you, Catherine. It's unanimous, minus Catherine's abstention. Warrants 15 and 16, item 26026. So this was the warrant for October 6th. It does have your name on it, Kath.
Yeah, I did not review it. I had checked with Theresa at the last one in September and she said that Rebecca was up next. So I think it was just reviewed by the treasurer.
Okay.
Which is fine.
Yep.
I mean, we looked at it in the packet and it's fine.
Yeah, really, it's one of those ones that is a RSU 38 payment.
And then some other stuff.
And there's some change.
Waste management. I'm just looking through to see if there's any questions we have.
Another one to mainland development that would have been for the sidewalk, right Eric?
I know mainland actually was finishing up the work for the fairgrounds when we were doing our revised application to the federal government before they shut down.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants 15 and 16 in the total amount of $436,044.22.
Second, I have a motion and a second for warrants 15 and 16. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, I hate when I do that. Presentation of Kennebec Savings Bank check donation for the Fairgrounds Community Park. Do you mind stepping up to put it? Thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Amanda Cooley and I am the Chief Marketing and Communications Officer at Kennebec Savings Bank. And one of my roles at the bank is to help lead our community giving and engagement program. And today I'm here to contribute. I have the actual check and a giant check for $25,000. And this is to support the Fairgrounds Community Park project. This is a project that aligns really well with our mission. It's about bringing people together and that's really what we try to be all about at Kennebec Savings Bank. This year we're slated to give close to 1.4 million to over 300 different organizations in the communities that we serve. And Reed Field is certainly one of them. We just love the fact that this project provides accessible recreation for people of all ages and all abilities. It's a place that people can come together and get to know each other. And I think now we need that more than ever. So we're really excited to be a part of that. So thank you so much for your leadership and making this happen and we look forward to seeing it come to life. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you. You guys want to do a picture with Amanda?
Yeah, I was gonna say, should we do a picture?
With the big old check? Yeah, but I just want to say again, thank you to Kennebec Savings Bank and Amanda for this opportunity. And it's fantastic to have partners like this in the community. We hope to find more as we're putting this project together. And I think we've done a lot of work to keep it going and I really appreciate the contributions being made here, so.
Yeah, as do we all. Thank you. Okay, Sean and Dave, you're up.
All right, and John, have you got yourself ready to take the challenge?
You can all get up there, yeah.
I love how you guys are also in the background on the screen. Do one more over. Thank you. Oh, good. Thank you so much.
So is that a whiteboard check?
Yes, this is the real thing.
Unfortunately, that was non-negotiable.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item we're gonna move to is 2627, Consider Junkyard and Automobile Graveyard Permit Applications. Eric?
All right, well, basically, we do this every year. The gentlemen here tonight are regular attendees. I really appreciate them showing up. But Chip is the man behind the scenes and he does the inspections and makes sure that they have no, you know, leaking fluids or other issues and he'll report out on what he found and the excellent condition of the operations that we're gonna talk about tonight. Chip?
What are graveyards, not junkyards, okay? I've had the privilege of doing this and it really is a privilege. I'm very impressed with all three people, like families, I meet up with each year. They're proud of what they do. Each year I go, their places look a little bit better. And they do really good things for this community. I do want to point out, we lost one of them recently, last month. Cy Whitcomb passed away. He was a treasurer. He loved what he did. And it was a real trip to go around his yard and have point out things. And if you ever get a chance someday, maybe Barbara, his son, could take you around, it's worth the trip. But Barbara and her son will be taking that on as their project, continue that license. And then I have the others. We have Scott Lucas over on Plains Road. And then there's one more. The Edgums, Ken and Mark. They've gone through a lot of trials and tribulations this year. But they were just doing everything right and it was a quick visit over there and I'm very impressed with what they do. All in all, things haven't changed much. Most of them, as I said, have cleaned up quite a bit. They've kept their yards good. They've reduced the amount of tires they have. The people that take away a lot of these cars have been allowing them to put tires in the car and send them off. They've gotten all their things straightened in terms of scrap metal, used tires, aluminum rims, batteries, catalytic converters. They have all kinds of things that have been laid on them by the state legislature and they do it and they do it right. So I think that about covers it. Again, I'm privileged to work for the town and to work with people like, like these. They do a good job. I found them all 100% on their inspections and I would ask that the board votes to approve these permits for the next year.
I'll make a motion to approve the complete, completed applications from Ken's drag in. I had these in front of me. Lucas. Antique Autos and Lucas Auto Parts and Salvage.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Have any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you next year.
If you want to stay, you really can.
It's gonna be just as exciting.
Okay, so we'll go back to our regular agenda here. So select board communications. Anybody have anything they would like to report out on?
Jared?
So there's an open space public hearing next Monday here at 6:30. The draft plan is already on the website. If you can't attend, please comment through the website and our group will definitely receive it and review.
Thank you, Jared. I just wanted to highlight the Reed Field Spooktacular, which is this coming Saturday. So there are many details about that on the webpage. But from the pumpkin walk to the trunk or treat to the movie, so hopefully it stays nice and dry like it's been all year until now. And the movie this year is Nightmare Before Christmas, which I've actually never seen, so.
It's a great movie.
Yeah, so I'm looking forward to that as per usual.
Saturday's supposed to be dry.
I'll take it. All right, staff communication, Eric, treasurer's report or... It doesn't say, it doesn't say town manager's report, it just says treasurer's report.
Just, just, just treasurer's because between the last meeting and this meeting, I haven't done much.
So you can tell us about the moves.
But that's a good thing because we want you to take vacations, so you're full of energy when you're here.
Yeah, no, it was, it was, it was very, very relaxing. Did Chip, I guess he submitted his report and he's good. Was, what, you want me to do my treasurer's report and then Chip's gonna do his?
Sure, that's the order we have.
Okay, all right, there we go. I'll do that. Just wanted to make sure I didn't have anything out of place.
All right, let me back up.
Okay, so check write conciliation was complete through the month of September and our accounts are in balance. No unusual activity was reported. We've worked on streamlining some of our financial interactions with the library and making other preparations for the budget process. We have auditors onsite tomorrow and Wednesday. So we're really moving on with the audit. The upcoming chairs meeting is going to be an opportunity to discuss the budget as well. So I'm looking forward to that. We did revise the schedule for our CDs and basically SEDARs investments and reinvested about $750,000. The yields are staying pretty high there. We were a little bit lean for a short period of time, probably less than $500,000 in the bank. But we knew what we had coming. We knew when we had the county tax due and things like that. And as soon as September rolls around, we're able to start replenishing our reserves with all those tax payments coming in. So as far as cash flow goes, we keep a close eye on that. And we're able to, you know, again, reinvest this, these SEDARs for six month terms. And I really think that we're gonna be continuing to see a 4% rate for a little bit longer. It dropped to 3.75 for the six month terms, but it's looking pretty good. And then RHR Smith is all ready to move along, as I mentioned. Teresa and I met with them on Monday, the 6th for a pre-audit interview. That's where they asked us all the questions about the things that we think each other did wrong. And if there's any issues that are out there that we should be reporting to them. So it's, you know, a good, good chance for us to, you know, talk with the auditors and get started. But so the 21st, the 23rd, we're gonna have the auditors here on site. The report covers the month of August and revenues and expenses should be on or near, I guess now this is September, nevermind. I did that, mistyped that, should be near 25%. And we're continuing to see fluctuations primarily in the checking account balance. But that's again related to that management of SEDARs I referenced. That will all stabilize for a few months. But then we'll see lower balances on average than in past years. Because again, we're putting more money to work. It's reserve funds that are things for, you know, different projects and items that we're saving for. But if it's being utilized for SEDARs, it can do two things at once. It can be a reserve and make us some money. Real estate, real estate payments are up predictably for the month and the year-to-date. Transfer station fees are up for the month and year-to-date compared to last year. So with monthly collection starting to normalize. So for a while there, we had a lot of fluctuations, but things are starting to look normal again. And that's a positive sign. Also, we are seeing a lot of demo, a lot of demolition debris come in to the transfer station, which is not unexpected this time of year, but I think it's extended it beyond the summer season in part because of all the dry weather and warm weather. So we're just seeing more material. And then total receipts are up for the month, but down for the year-to-date. But that's primarily reflecting a different payment schedule for state fees than last year. Because we had to pay more last month than we did this month last year. This time around, it just shifted a little bit, so. Other than that, things are looking good. Parks and Recreation is kind of a bit of an anomaly. We're at 44%. But when you think about it, most of our activity is July, June, July, August or, and into September. And so we do spend a lot of our staff time during that period. So that's all I have for treasurer's report.
Anybody have any questions for Eric?
It looks good. No questions here.
All right, thank you. Chip?
So, our first quarter 2025, I can never get these numbers right. How they're anyways. Building and plumbing permits have been pretty steady. I mean, they've been going up for quite a while, for a few years. This, this time, if you got my report, you'll see that the number of permits is actually down a little bit. But the, the costs on them have gone up quite substantially. And that is for people that have made mistakes. And when they make mistakes, there's fines. And so that's why you see an anomaly here, why the totals on permits would be a bit down, but the income would be up. Just the opposite more of what I expect, or anybody would expect. The plumbing permits are pretty much on par from last year, a difference of $50 really. So that tells me things are slowing down a bit by the numbers. But it's not telling me by the actions that go on in the offices. It's been very busy. There's a lot of people tricking out their houses for next year. A lot of permits being given out for that. A lot of people doing planning before they even go for the permit. So it's been busy. Tree removal's been really busy. And it's quite the challenge going to these properties and seeing people that want to have vista of all the lakes. Like, can't do that. It's not dead. So that's been fun. And one of them was taking a trip down my road to do an inspection on three of the other places on my road that I have to oversee as code officer. It's not easy. I go by a house and there's two huge trees and it's just been taken down five feet from the water. And I walked down, you gotta hear the story. So I walked down and I said, guys, what are you doing? We're taking down trees. What's it to you? I said, do you have a permit? They said, of course, our boss has got a permit. Why don't you just go away and ask the guy in Town Hall about permits? And I said, so, it's a little fun. It wasn't fun. We had to take care of it. They paid for it. Won't have the tree back for years, but there's been a lot of that kind of thing going on. New projects continue to progress. We have the meeting house renovations going and gonna be going even more next year. We got the subdivision at Metatoma was finally approved by the planning board. Nothing's gone over there, on over there yet, even though it was done back in July, August. So we'll see what happens there. And there's a new solar project cranking out upon Carlton Pond. And that's another one. We'll see how that goes. I've had calls to my office from unnamed parties that are interested. So needless to say, we may be looking at two or three more solar projects. Unless we get somebody looking for a moratorium or something like that would pause it. But I don't know if that will happen, but... Unless we get somebody looking for a moratorium or something like that would pause it, but I don't know if that will happen, but I think we're going to be busy with those coming in the next year. I've been busy working on properties that have been challenged. One ended up in court, didn't show up. So we're having that enforced in the upcoming month. It's a shame. We have others that have been challenged and they've cooperated, three or four of them for sure. Where we went out and they fixed the situation, either taking away the units there or cleaning up the properties. And then again, we have some that are dragging on and we keep an eye on them. Everybody does get treated fairly in this town. Nobody gets special compensation. Everybody's expected to go by the rules because they're not easy. I get many calls on these camp renovations that are going on on the lakes. As I said, there's some really nice places going up. They're all very challenged with a third or a quarter or a half an acre. But keep an eye on them. We make sure they have all their erosion control and everything in place. But they, everybody wants to say something. So they go buying their canoes and kayaks and they call me up and I go through, yeah, we're watching it. It's, we don't often get complaints. We don't know, know about. Along those lines, as I said to you last year, DEP is short staffed. So this makes a lot of work for us here. The upside is, is that we get the fines. If it goes that far, downside is it's a lot of work with all the trees and erosion and everything else, but gets done and we're just trying to keep our waters clean. It's a challenge, but it's worthwhile to all of us. Looking ahead, there's been, as I said, more calls on solar, solar projects. Nicely, I've got a couple of calls on historic houses here that contractors are looking to purchase and turn into multifamily units, which would be very good for our needs from the state mandating more housing. Maybe some affordable, I don't know, but that's a very good sign. And let me wrap up with one comment. The solar fields have been extremely difficult, a challenge in terms of bringing them up to speed and then watching them afterwards. As I said, we'll probably have more. In addition, the large projects, which I consider over a half a million dollars, which we do have a few of each year, are also tough. What I'd like to suggest, I've suggested to the planning board, just to want to make you aware of it. I'd like to see compliance bonds created for these. The problem is, you know, it is a lot of work. We do our job. We expect they do their job on the tail end. But with the solar projects at the tail end, it seems to be the tail end for a lot of them. And the hammers come down on one, the other one has had questions and things. It would be nice to have these compliance bonds, which I was used to in my previous life on the planning board in another town, another state. But they really do make a difference because if you get to the end and somebody's not happy with configuration or what they've done or haven't done, you have that bond that you can hold up. And hopefully they get the things done. If they don't, then we have a bond to go do it ourselves. So if you hear about that, if people are complaining about that, that's the reason we're probably going to go in that direction. Finally, I appreciate your support and the town resident's support. 99% of the time, we, you know, have a great time, great relationship and we get things done, done right, I hope. And that's it.
Anyone have any questions with Chip?
I do.
Go ahead.
I won't make it take too long. Um, so you said we, you have several people looking into more solar farms.
Yes.
Um, I just think that might be something that we want to look at. If you've driven over 219 in Leeds by the railroad tracks, they destroyed a whole hillside there, putting in a gigantic solar farm. I don't want to see Reed Field turn into solar farm after solar farm after solar farm. I don't mind people having business. I think that's wonderful that they do. But I think we want to be careful with how much of any one thing we have, like we did with the marijuana businesses. We have limits on certain things. That might be something that we want to talk about. Is that something we talk about or is that really a planning board thing?
It could come in two ways. Okay. It can come as a petition from the public for a moratorium for the, you know, planning board to put a pause on taking any new applications until, you know, they can come to, can they, they can do it. Several towns have done that. It can come from the select board. Select board sees it's important. Would like to put a pause on it. They can come to the planning board and, you know, say, we want to do a moratorium. Believe it would take a town meeting vote to actually, you know, approve the moratorium. Moratorium would stay in force for 180 days or so. If they're not done, then it could last longer. But that is something that can be started by either you or a moratorium, a referendum from the town.
So what is the purpose of the moratorium? To give us time to change the rules in that six month period?
It would be, you would have the proposal of what you want it to do. Okay. For example, it might be, we see the need to preserve the town or we, you know, we don't see the value in overburdening our, you know, whatever. We would like the planning board to look at it, look at the situation and then look at the ordinance and see if there are changes that can be made, i.e. limiting the number of solar farms, i.e. whatever. And they would have to go through that exercise and come up with either no, it works out. We don't think it, you know, works. Or they come up with, which I believe they come with, they would again, limit the number or sizes of further of the solar farms.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chip.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Okay, the next thing we have is boards committees. We have some minutes here with Board of Assessors minutes from September 15th, planning board from September 9th, 23rd, October 14th, and the rec committee from October 15th. Thank you very much for submitting those minutes. Public communication, any members of the public like to speak? They've all left.
We don't have any here.
I think.
There's one online, but they haven't said anything.
If anybody online would like to speak, please do so. Okay. Next item on our agenda is 26022, here report from David Ledoux and Derago Assessing Group on the municipal reevaluation process. Dave, if you would like to join us at the podium. Eric, are you going to share screen?
I am, I'm waiting for Dave to tell me when to do it because Dave, Dave knows what he's talking about.
Oh, you can fire it up anytime.
Okay.
I appreciated seeing that presentation ahead of time. It will limit my questions because they were answered.
Or raise some more. So my name's Dave Ledoux. I'm your assessing agent. I've been since around 2017. This last five years has been very interesting since COVID hit in the real estate market. Pretty much everything has doubled in the past five years with respect to residential properties. We're certainly seeing that in Reed Field. So this revaluation is kind of timely because things are starting to level off a little bit. And quite honestly, when, when Eric and I first talked about doing the revaluation, at the time I was a one man show. Joined the Derago Assessing Group with a couple of close relatives with the purpose of perhaps doing some revaluations. And we decided to incorporate the Reed Field revaluation into the Derago Assessing Group umbrella, if you will. I am 70 years old and Eric might have been a little nervous. So I'm sure he liked the idea of having some backup from the group in case.
Belts and suspenders, right?
70 years young.
Unfortunately, you know, we, we talked about doing the revaluation right off and right, right off the bat. My partners decided to take on a contract for another revaluation. That was an accelerated one. Quasi Route One Coastal Town. And that has monopolized our town, time over the past two years. So I'm looking forward to really getting back in and inserting myself into Reed Field in a big way. I've been working with, part time with four or five towns in recent years and I'm slowly getting rid of all of them except for Reed Field. My focus for the next couple of years is going to be strictly on Reed Field. So my partners put together a PowerPoint presentation for the managers meeting up at Sunday River, I believe it was. And Eric thought maybe we could incorporate some of that into an educational program posted on the website. And maybe that'll alleviate some fears or questions or, or whatever else. So what I'll do is I'll get right into that, that PowerPoint at this point in time. What is a revaluation? A revaluation is essentially a program put in place by which a municipality reappraises all properties in town with the idea of raising the values to hopefully fair market value. This is something which has been very difficult for the past five years. We in Reed Field have done a lot of factoring in the past five years, but those factorings have been sort of, sort of a global multiplier to try to keep us somewhere as near 100% of market. We've, we've typically been around 80, 90% plus in recent years, we're doing that factoring. But one thing about doing the factoring that will really help the town when we finally implement this revaluation is a lot of towns waiting long to, to do a revaluation, then they implement it all at once and essentially doubling all the values in town. And there's that sticker shock that everyone gets from that, that doubling of values from this last stretch. The town we did on the coast, it was just a little bit more than a double of the value. Mill rate did not come, was not cut in half. It was cut quite a bit, but most people saw our tax increase. And that was because of the budget purposes or the budget reasons. The property tax is made up of three different budgets. There's a municipal expenditures, there's the county expenditures. And the big one is the school expenditures for most towns. Those three go into making up what property taxes are raised to pay. And there's a little bit of a thing called an overlay, which is helps us in rounding off the, the mill rates and that, that brings in a little extra revenue for the town. Typically, most towns use the, the overlay for covering abatements that come up during the course of the year. So revaluation is essentially a reappraisal process of incorporated to do the entire town. It's intended to rebalance the, the tax burden. Over time, not all properties increase or decrease at the same rate. And therefore inequities creep into the system. People may add, you know, some, some additions to their property or something which isn't picked up by the assessor and that's typically picked up at a revaluation. And picking up that new property or deducting things that have been eliminated from people's properties helps to rebalance the tax rate amongst the, the individual taxpayers. And one thing that is universally misunderstood by a lot of taxpayers or most taxpayers is that revaluations do not bring in extra revenue to the town. They are revenue neutral. It's the budgeting process which decides how much is going to be raised, the revaluation. Other than the expense of the revaluation does not bring in that, any, any revenue at all, extra revenue to the town. Why a revaluation? We have a constitutional requirement to assess all properties, real and personal at what we call just value, or the constitution calls just value. Just value has been interpreted by the courts to mean fair market value. So it's the assessor's job to equitably assess all properties in accordance with fair market value. In accordance means it doesn't have to be at fair market value, just that all properties be assessed equitably in relative to fair market value. So a town which is assessing a 70% 70% of fair market value, if they're doing uniformly for everybody, that passes muster with the main constitutional requirement for, for a property tax assessing. There is a statutory requirement to assess properties at at least 70% of fair market value. And I can tell you right now, there are a very significant percentage of towns in this state, which are not assessing at 70% of fair market value. Simply because this, this rapid increase and a reluctance to factor like, like we have in Reed Field to try to keep things closer to 90, 100%. The courts have upheld the, the interpretation of just value to mean fair market value. And again, a revaluation is all about fairness. It's about treating all the taxpayers within the town fairly. There's a saying that I often use in the business. And that is that we can all agree that property taxes are unfair. It's the assessor's job to make sure they're equally unfair for everybody. So fairness is in essence, the job of the assessor, making sure that people are not overvalued or over under valued on their property. The revaluation process incorporates different things, different reviews do different things. In fact, I was talking to one assessor on the coast. He does assessing in three towns and he says he's done something like nine revaluations in the last five years between those municipalities. That's an example of going to an extreme to try to make sure that everybody is treated equitably. You got to have the staffing to do it in each of those towns to, to help with that particular process. But one of the biggest things about the assessing process is the data collection, the door to door canvassing of all the properties to make sure that we're picking up everything which is subject to taxation in the state. Data collection is by far and away the, the, the most cumbersome, the most labor intensive part of the process. I'm pretty much doing a lion's share of that. I've had my wife work with me. She was the assessor in Lisbon a few years ago, and she knows more than I do about assessing, but we have, we also have the lady who's the current assessor in Lisbon is, is doing some of our field work in the southern part of the town this, this summer and fall. And she's planning on continuing into next year. Her name is Amy, Amy Weir, and her partner's name is Tina. In case you ever run into them or they happen to knock on your door. So data collection is primary to, to the process. Reviewing sales, that's something I was doing today is reviewing sales for the past year. We're required to file a report with main revenue services each year about all the properties that sell in town. Whether there's an arms length transaction or whether it was a sale which is not usable because it might've been an interfamily or there was some, something about that sale that didn't make it a fair arms length transaction, if you will. So I'm looking at sales now and it will be for the next two years. Along with those sales comes a market analysis. What we are looking for, we do a market analysis is looking at different kinds of property, striations of values. Mobile homes, double wides, ranches. We have in town, I think it's seven, seven or eight neighborhoods we'll be looking at. The, the different neighborhood factors, we have different land values now from the last reveal. And we'll be looking to make some adjustments to those neighborhood categories. And field review, hopefully at the end of the process is time to go around and make sure that everything is accurate. That's part of what I do as an assessing major anyway, is, is go around and check on properties, especially in conjunction with the permits that Chip shares with me, pick up a lot of value that way. All the decks and porches and new construction and all that. So when we're, when we're doing the data collection, next side slide. We're looking at the exterior of the house. We're looking at style, quality of construction, condition of the property, materials that are used in it. The year that it was built is critical, square footage. Trio and most municipal assessing programs for property tax purposes are, have a large basis in square footage. And of course, we're looking at, looking at the outbuildings, sheds, garages, decks, barns and those types of things. If and when we get into the property for the interior, again, we're looking at quality, condition. We're looking at, we're looking at bedroom count. That doesn't impact the valuation process, whether you have a one bedroom or a five bedroom, it really does not make a difference in the software that we use. What does make a difference is bathrooms, two piece, three piece. What does make a difference is bathrooms, two-piece, three-piece, and number of bathrooms and half-baths. We're looking at floor finishes for, again, to look, sort of look at the quality of construction, kitchen and bath. Heating is universal in that it's all priced about the same with the exception of wood and no heat. And then there's usually a deduction. Air conditioning, biggest thing we've run into in recent years is heat pumps. And of course, when you put a heat pump in, it also provides cooling. So we pick up the air conditioning aspect of the heat pumps. And other amenities such as fireplaces, extra living units, kitchens, and that type of thing. So going on to FAQs. Who's conducting the revaluation primarily? I'm conducting the revaluation. Occasionally, I get assistance with data collection. I get a lot of assistance with the sales analysis over this, not this coming winter, but next year before we turn the revale in in '27. So why, you know, if I haven't improved my property, why does my value go up? The market of this past five years is a clear indicator of that. A lot of people did not do anything to their properties, and yet precious prices or what they were selling for increased significantly. This type of a boom has occurred several times over my history with property tax. I was in Main Revenue Services back in the 80s, 90s, 2000s, right up until 2017. And we saw a number of booms during that period of time. One of the biggest booms we saw was in the mid to late 1980s, very similar to what we've seen the past five years. And a lot of people will tell you that there was a real bust in the market after that, that a lot of values backed up considerably. That really wasn't the case, except in some areas of the state, particularly southern Maine and southern coastal Maine. You did see some backing up of the property, but that was also where you saw the biggest increases during that boom as well. Same thing this time as far as the boom is concerned. But when people tell me, oh, what about, you know, you're going to do the revale, then the market's going to go bust. You've got to do another one, bring the values down. In my 40 years with the Bureau, we never saw blanket significant decreases. In the 80s, overall statewide, the biggest decrease we saw was a 2% decrease. And that was following double-digit increases for a number of years. In fact, York County as a whole was going up 20% a year at that point. So, you know, a big focus of the revale is looking at conditionings, how well properties have been maintained. Oftentimes, they aren't. If so, they're going to receive a lower conditional adjustment. And those people may not see as big an adjustment as those who have newer properties or well-kept properties. What was I going to say? We, it'll come back to me. Again, how much revenue is the town? Next slide. How much revenue will the town collect from a revaluation? No extra revenue. Again, the purpose of the revaluation is to restore equity amongst the taxpayers in town, not to bring in extra revenue. It's the budgeting process that determines any increases or decreases and what needs to be raised. The assessments just distribute that tax burden. I'll go on to the next slide. Calculating a mill rate and tax amount. Your, again, your property taxes, total property taxes raised are essentially the three budgets, municipal, school, and county budgets. And then a little bit for overlay, which is less than a 5% increase. And typically for Reed Field, it's been 2% or less increase. The mill rate for a town is established by dividing what needs to be raised to fund those three budgets by the total value of the town. So as the total value of the town increases, even though taxes may increase, if the value of the town increases more than the spending does, you'll see a decrease in the mill rate. Then again, if you don't have a change from year to year in your valuation, but your budgets go up, you'll see an increase in everybody's taxes as a result. The mill rate will be a little bit higher. So, you know, a town that needs to raise a million dollars, $10 million to raise for the county budgets, if the total value of the town is $700,000, you take that $10 million to be raised by, divided by the $700 million, you come up with a mill rate of .01429, or as we often refer to it, a mill rate of $14.29 per thousand, $14.29 per thousand. That mill rate is then applied against all the individual properties, the value of each individual property, come up with all the taxes that are needed to fund the town. So this next slide, this is a pre-revaluation. Look at the things. And again, total value of these three structures in this particular example is 1.6 million. The budget to be raised is $20 million. The tax rate is going to be 20 million divided by 1.6 million, comes up with a mill rate of 12.5 mills. This is, we'll say, this is where you are right today, although these aren't the actual numbers. Next. So that mill rate gets distributed to each of the categories of property here. You have, example here, you have a home, you have a waterfront home, and you have a commercial building. And the total collected from that assessment for those three assessments is $20,000. Next. If you were to have equal reassessments or a reassessment done without any budget increases, you're going to see an increase in value. In the example we have in this slide, the residential house, a $300,000 value, up from $200,000. The waterfront home is $600,000, up from $400,000. And the commercial property is up to 1.5 million from the million. They're each a 50% increase. This is similar to what we have done over the past five years. We have done an across-the-board factoring of values, and this is exactly what has happened. So your total value increases. Your budget remains the same in this particular example. But when you compute your mill rate, your mill rate's gone down from 12 down to 8.33 mills, $8.33 cents per thousand. Next. So each of those, when you assess that new mill rate against the new value on those properties, you're still going to raise the $20,000 that you needed to to begin. Next. Varian reassessments with no budget increase. And this is when you have not an across-the-board factoring, but a more of an educated, based-on-sales factoring. In this example, the home has increased or has been increased, as it was in the prior examples, from $200,000 to $300,000, which is a 50% increase. The waterfront property increased, in this example, more than the non-waterfront residential properties. So it went up 55%. And in this example, the commercial properties went up 40%. This is sort of what we're seeing, not exactly, but sort of. We don't have enough sales. Certainly, we don't have enough commercial sales in the town of Reed Field. So I rely on talking to other assessors in other towns that do have a lot of commercial. And we have been a little bit lighter with commercials with our factoring. Another thing that I've done with respect to commercial properties is I've looked at the undeveloped acreage figure. We had an example come to us a few years ago in which you had a business which operated on basically a two-acre lot, but they owned about 15 acres, we'll say. And we were assessing them with a pretty hefty commercial land value for each of those additional acres. I looked around at the various businesses and the number of acres, undeveloped acres associated with them. And a couple of years ago, I reduced the undeveloped acreage value on the commercial. It's still higher than the non-commercial, but it's quite a bit less. So I've done a couple of things with commercial to be not as aggressive as residential and waterfront. Next slide. And again, through this, even though you have different increases in the percentage value increase with these class, three classes of property, you still only bring it in 20,000 because you're looking at the same budget. Values have increased, budget has not, total raise has gone down. But the distribution of where it's raised has actually shifted a little bit off from the business onto the residential and particularly onto the waterfront in this particular example. Next one is a little bit trickier. This is where you have various reassessments with a 5% budget increase. So the budget in this case goes up to 21,000. And again, it's not realistic, but it's an example that you can put your head around. A budget's gone up 5% to $21,000. And the revaluation of the three classes of property has taken place. But now you have a mill rate of 9.05 mills as a result of this budget increase. So it's gone up from, what was it, 8.3?
8.62.
8.62, to a little over 9. So, next. So what you, what, this is, yeah, that's... In essence, when you apply the new mill rate, 9.05, against the valuation of these three classes, you end up raising $21,000. So that's, this is to illustrate the dynamic of the valuation increase versus the budget increase or the lack of budget increase with the valuation increase. Next slide. And this is sort of a breakdown, the old taxes on the residential house, the waterfront house, and the commercial property. And in this case, you have, due to the revaluation, you would have actually seen a difference in the tax if it was only attributable to the valuation process of $432. So when you do this revaluation and redistributing the tax burden, you do see properties go down. There's a classic line, a third of the properties will go up and you do a revale, a third will stay the same, and a third will go down. I think assessing has progressed a lot more in the last 20 or 30 years, and you're not seeing this 33%, 33%, 33% increase or decrease in taxes. I'd say it's more like a 50 remain relatively the same and 20% to 25% increases, or we'll see increases or decreases. You also illustrated here is the amount of the, the difference in the tax burden on these three types of property due to the budget alone. So budget, as this budget increases, have their consequences. And on the bottom line, there's the net tax change attributable to the combination of the revaluation done and the budget increase. And that's sort of like the toughest nut to get your head around with respect to this. So as we go into the revale, well, first of all, let me tell what I'm thinking of doing for this coming year. We've got revale due in '27. Hopefully by next summer, we'll have most of our properties visited. And as we're visiting the properties and we're finding the changes, we are making them, making those changes into the system. Most of them are not very significant. A couple of them have been. As an example, revale was done, I think it was in 2004. There's been a couple of reviews since, and the board will, I think, will remember this. We came across a three-story ranch in town. Okay, so...
And which was it?
So you have a, we had a ranch with a partially finished basement, but on story height, it was marked for three stories. So it was valued at three stories. The ranch was the descriptive, and the three stories was the multiplier. And I went right to Eric and the board, and we did an abatement for that one right off the bat. Came across another property, they were assessed for, I think it was a full basement, and really, I think the house was either on post or on a slab. And this person was known to be of limited resources, we thought prudent to make that change right off the bat as well. But most of the changes that we're coming across are not significant. This revaluation that I worked on with the rest of the group from a year ago, it was in Woolwich. And I had over 500 properties myself. There were a couple of properties that I went to. There was one, it was a brand-new, relatively brand-new house. It's probably only five years old. And the main house itself was, I think it was like 44 feet. And it was measured at 32 feet. So I knew they were going to see a big increase when their tax bills came out. This would have been last year. And I warned them ahead of time, you know. And I do try to give that warning, if it's a significant increase that there's something that I found that is going to cause an increase. So, thanks for listening. You have any questions at all? I've been at this thing for 40-plus years, and I've seen it all and heard it all, and I'd be surprised if you stopped me. But go ahead.
Catherine? Am I the only one? I always have questions.
Sure do.
So, nothing new. So I think it's really key, as we talk about this, to make a couple of points. One of them is, in the revaluation, the town doesn't receive any more money unless the budget numbers change.
Right.
But that doesn't mean that every property in the town will still be taxed the same. Because, as you said, there will be districts that may go up, neighborhoods, or commercial may act differently than waterfront than non-waterfront. So some people will see a change just based, with no budget change. They will see a change in their rate because the relative rate is different with these property categories. And I think that'll be a really key piece to not having 1,000 people calling you saying, "How come? You told me it wouldn't change, the budget didn't go up, and yet my property went up." No one's going to call and say, "Mine went down, oh, woo-hoo." And so I think we can do some advanced education about that type of situation. Doesn't have to have monetary examples, but just that different property categories behave differently in the sales market. It's not that we're doing something in Reed Field to say that waterfront people have to pay more, but their houses sell for more, so they're worth more. And that's how, that's what this is all based on, right, is on sales figures.
It's based on sales data.
And I don't think anybody's complaining, and I think this is an important point too. When they go to sell their house that they bought for $80,000 and they sell it for $250,000, they're going, "Woo-hoo!" But if we appraise it for $250,000, they're going, "Oh, my gosh, you can't do that." And so you just got to understand. And that's key, I think that's our part, is to make sure people do understand that. There's two ways to look at this, and they're both fair. They're just from a different perspective.
Yeah. Eric, do you have plans to post the presentation separate to our minutes, like as a titled section? Because I think it would be really beneficial.
Yeah, so...
Because the examples at the end are perfect.
We've been developing kind of the information on the assessing page, and we will continue to put on information like this, especially with the positive feedback from the board. That'll go up along with anything else that we can gather and present to help the public understand what's happening and why, and who's responsible.
Could we try and, can we try to keep it, though, on the front page, part of the news section?
That's tricky.
I know it's tricky, but I just feel like, at least if we could get it there for a bit, I just think...
Yeah, I see.
So people aren't going to, I don't want people to go looking for it. I want it to be very...
Slam them in the face.
This is right here. The examples are right here. Try and educate yourself on what it means.
Yeah. Okay, no, I think we can do that.
If anything.
It might save a few phone calls.
It might save a few phone calls.
Right. And then if it's possible for us to put out a written... Right, and then if it's possible for us to put out a written description of the the classes of properties that cause differences in valuation. Is it like my house sits on a hill with a view? Does that have a different value than a house that sits in the woods with no view?
That's that's really been a topic of discussion in in years past, particularly over in New Hampshire. Because they they really adopted a a a policy of uh view taxation, if there's a view. I sometimes use a subjective.
View of everything.
Yeah, I was thinking it was pretty subjective, yeah.
I mean, I've I've come across a lot of properties where where they have a field and they, I see they have their launches set up to look over the field and even and, you know, to them, that's a great view. I did one property down in Hiram, uh, sold for ten dollars under a million dollars here about four years ago. And it had the most gorgeous view of Mount Washington that you could ever get in Maine anyway. And and Hiram is a is an interesting town because it has a mountain in the middle of the town. You really can't get from one side of town to the other without going through another town or taking a dirt road through town. But there are tons of properties with views. Because it is subjective, I've I've pretty much avoided it. Uh, but if you're going to address it, you don't put view factor on the property record card. Under land value, you might add five percent, you know, instead of a hundred percent, you you go a hundred factor a hundred and five percent.
But waterfront is different than non waterfront typically in Maine?
As far as sale price?
As far as property value?
Yes.
Okay.
Although that, that's also something you could take a lot of examples where that's not true.
Yeah, I'm gonna say that one is frozen for twenty-five percent of the year.
And some people, it's it's the, it can be like, if you have a hundred feet, but you might have a hundred feet, but then you might go back and. Widen it out, right?
But I just think those are the kinds of things that people focus on. And so if we could figure out how to describe those different situations, it helps people to understand more. Wayne did their revaluation a year or so ago, and they also did a pretty large increase in their budget. And when we got our our property tax bill there, I was pretty surprised. It was like forty percent more than it had been the year before. Uh, and so we called. And I know all about how it works, and I still called because I was like, this is a lot. Um, but they hadn't revalued or done any factoring for a number of years, so. It's hard.
Back when I was at Maine Revenue, uh, we have a return we filed with Maine Revenue each year, municipal valuation return. And there's a hundred pieces of information in that, every town files it with Maine Revenue Services. And they compile it into an Excel spreadsheet, or at least they used to, I think they're probably using the mainframe these days, but uh, and I was sort of a data geek on that stuff. And I used to keep track of of munis, every municipal county state, their county tax, their municipal assessment, their school assessment, and their overlay. Also, I used to keep track of how much revenue sharing they used to use to reduce their tax commitment. I had that all in a spreadsheet for every town in the state for about four years, and it was amazing. The overlay was something which I I touched upon and is intended to allow for the rounding of the mill rate. Because when the overlay was built into statute, it was eighteen twenty. Actually, probably Massachusetts had it before that, we didn't have calculators. Uh, it was, all these tax bills are hand calculated, so it's best to have a tax rate of twelve than eleven point nine eight seven three two, if you're hand calculating a tax rate. So, um, I used to keep track of of overlays for towns. Maximum overlay by statute is five percent. If you go five point oh one percent, your entire commitment is invalid. So most people don't play around with that five percent. But every year I could find towns that did exceed that five percent overlay. The uh, some towns, particularly one we did a revale for recently, objected to us going uh live in importing our data that we were collecting from day to day into the system. They wanted us to wait until two thousand and twenty-four taxes were committed before we started doing our data entry. We objected to that. Uh, because hypothetically, you have somebody who built a garage and it was never picked up by the assessor for years. And then you go do the revale and you pick up this garage. Well, if you don't put it into the system, you don't get assessed for it till next year. If you do put it in the system, it just makes their tax for this year that much fairer compared to everyone else, because everyone else's garage is being assessed. But what you can't do when you find a garage that's been there for ten years, you can't go back and assess back taxes. You can't do anything retroactive in the way of increasing values. It's only from here going forward, so that's why we said we'll do the data entry now and going forward. People may have already gotten away with not paying property taxes on that garage for three or four years, but at least we'll pick it up now and be there for the next couple of years until we really implement the revale.
Thanks.
Thanks very much, Dave. We appreciate all the information, I hope we can get it posted soon.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Eric, did you add something to our packet for the weather vane?
I didn't add anything, I was gone.
Trying to get hungry.
I I will, yeah. I think we are actually gonna table that to carry on with the hungry theme. Um, because, so I'd recommend that anyway, because we didn't actually have that in the notice that was sent out. Um, and so, um, also the weather vane, we didn't, they weren't notified either. So what I'd like to do is just take that up at the next.
Sounds good to me.
Looks like their, at least their restaurant license doesn't expire until December.
December.
Yeah, we've got, we've got time, yeah.
Yeah, I just saw that it was in there, I didn't know if something.
But boy, it was nice to see all of that online instead of not seeing any of that, really.
Can I?
That's really a great system.
You'd already chosen dinner.
It's twelve fourteen, so we have to do it by December fourteen, before December fourteenth.
I think it'll be the next meeting.
Do we need to extend?
Probably. Another five minutes?
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting for five minutes.
Second.
I was in favor.
Well, that was five minutes from now, so.
Yeah, fifteen total, that's what she meant in joke. Okay, twenty-six zero twenty-nine, select board budget goals discussion. Does anybody have a piece uh that they would like to make sure is on our list?
I'd like to make sure that we follow through on what we discussed several meetings ago, which was that we want to try and keep the budget, the revaluation year as level as possible. So as we're planning for this year and next.
Yes.
Let's, let's keep that in mind. That's my big goal.
Anybody else have something? Uh, I do, nobody else does. I would like just to think about uh salary for a full-time rec programmer or a programming position, like what that would look like for budgeting it to go full-time as to, well, what is it right now, half to three-quarter?
It's just half-time.
It's half-time.
So you want to expand and not make another one?
No, I'll make another one, I want to talk, see what it would look like to expand it, because I think we're seeing that it could.
When do we anticipate the Fairgrounds project will be done?
Uh, should be done by next fall.
So that would coincide well with, because then we're gonna move on to the beach and then that allows for a lot more things to happen, having both of those properties in better shape.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good goal. Did we, speaking of the beach, we want to um look at some planning work around that, or did you want to? Because we would really be starting next July. We we could, I mean, I'd like to have a little bit of breather. Um, the the sidewalk is gonna be coming up right after that. Um, and that'll be twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven also overlapping between those two years, so.
We put that in our.
We put it in our goals, I believe, yeah.
In the CPI, right, or the capital plan? I think to start looking at the beach.
But in twenty-seven, right? Was it?
Yeah, I don't remember what year, I know we.
I think we talked about it as part of like that two-year plan as well, so. I don't know what, yeah, I mean.
I think it's something we want to think about if we're talking about stabilizing over that two.
Yeah, that's what I think too.
Yes.
I don't have a concrete thought about what that looks like in terms of the planning numbers, because I'm always way off on those.
Yeah, no, so am I apparently, so.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll keep working, but I think the idea is that we want to investigate some of that stuff and maybe do a little bit of uh, do thought and planning on what that might look like as part of the budget process.
Yeah.
I think we may have just learned a pretty important lesson from the Fairgrounds project with what you just did in the last several weeks. Um, that maybe we don't want to spend our planning money the way we have been because those plans didn't come out to be actually all that realistic. They were way over.
In in some ways they were, I mean, I think it was really.
It was the.
The forensic of what it was. I don't think they were over or wrong, I think it was just the way in which they were detailed out wasn't clear.
So that makes them not right, so. They're either not right or you can call them wrong.
So I guess.
Whichever way we want to phrase it, it wasn't very realistic, and we're finding out that we can do it for a whole lot less. And it's a significant percentage less, like twenty, twenty-five percent less, so.
So I guess the cost is still there, we're just absorbing more of it by doing more for ourselves. And so I think that I I wouldn't say that it was inaccurate, I mean, the the, it's still gonna be a million dollar project, we're just doing a lot of that ourselves.
Catherine would like to go on the record that it was wrong.
That it was wrong.
Well, you found materials for a whole lot less money and you, so.
Some, I mean, it's it's barely, it's complicated.
It's so, yeah.
It is, but I'm just saying, as we're looking at planning money.
Yep.
I don't want to just say, okay, we'll spend fifty thousand dollars planning a project at the beach when maybe we could have someone plan it more realistically for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Sure, yeah, and then that's what we're doing with the salt sand show, we we we've got estimates for a design for a a certain type of structure. And that was not something we were gonna carry forward because it was unrealistic.
Yep.
So, yeah, no, I I hear what you're saying.
Right. So let's not pay for that design if we're figure out it's just not gonna happen anyway, so. Start with something different.
And maybe the money is in the wages for our programmer to look at this stuff.
Maybe. I'll give you an update that I don't think the county budget will go down.
Surprise.
I wouldn't be surprised if it goes up a million dollars or two million dollars.
Are we part of the, one of the counties that wants to build a?
No.
Or not?
Can validate the jails.
Solidary jails?
They're not jails, they're correctional facilities. Um, just like they're not junkyards, right? Um, no, that's Oxford Franklin and Anders Skogin.
Okay.
And our correctional facility is usually full or we have room to take in. So we're not looking to.
Expand it.
To, right, well, we can't really, that building is ancient. I mean, it was built, some of it was built in the eighteen hundreds, so. And maybe that's part of the problem, right? But some of those jails, like the Franklin County Jail, was only built like thirty or forty years ago, and it has issues, so.
It's newer than some of our schools in the town.
Right. So anyway, as I get information, I'll pass it along.
Any other items that anybody would like, agenda items for future meetings?
Yes, can we have a discussion about the solar farms?
Yep. It will not be the next meeting.
That's, well, the next meeting's. Is one in.
Yeah, we have a, the chairs meeting with some small items on the sixth.
The chair.
That's the third, right?
Third, yes, not.
So the one after that?
Yeah.
Yep, and Rebecca on the third, because I know you'll be there. Can you talk to the chairs about getting a blurb put on to the radio station? Because they've been doing really great with the radio station.
Radio station meeting is right now, it's library.
Well, that was tomorrow night.
Is it?
I think it's tomorrow night.
Anyway, you and I were gonna, maybe I was doing that, but anyway, if you could just ask the chairs if they have anything they'd like to do, that would be really helpful. Did the fair go well?
Um, I heard it was lightly attended, but it was um good for the groups to get together in a different environment. I think that Janet said that her suggestion would be that maybe we try to offer more of an incentive for people to come as opposed to just come and volunteer.
It was on a holiday weekend.
Yep.
Yeah.
Maybe during carnage days.
Yeah.
But in any case.
But yeah, it 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 was a success in that it brought our groups together to talk to one another and um I guess had some some light attendance, so.
Intermotion order.
So moved.
Second. Have motion of second, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much, everybody.